Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of Cincinnati City Council for Monday, November 21, 2022. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel's Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kell Smith, President. Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Here.
Four members present.
All right, we have to wait for a moment until a fifth person joins us.
Mr. Chair, apologies, I couldn't get unmuted. I'm here, thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our five, which is our quorum. As we join from our remote locations, please either rise or put your hand on your heart, face the flag. We will do the pledge of allegiance and following that, we will have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. You may be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
To a second.
Second.
All those in favor who sent the fire by saying aye.
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 Opposers, nay. The agenda is amended. The next order of business is proclamation. I have one for the Pittsburgh Service Summit, and if you would please come for it, all I am presenting this proclamation for our president, President Teresa Kell Smith. On her behalf, I am presenting and reading this proclamation. Whereas, Founded by Allegheny County Councilman Tom Baker, Get Involved held its 13th Annual Pittsburgh Service Summit on Thursday, November 17, at the Coro Center for Civic Leadership. And whereas Get Involved Incorporated enables student leaders and young professionals to stay active by providing a variety of leadership-focused events, service-oriented programs, and courses and inspiring training throughout the region. And whereas awards are given annually to local young professionals ages 21 to 35, not me, in the nonprofit business and governmental sectors who dedicate their time and talent to community organizations and who are making a positive difference in the region. And whereas, congratulations to the following individuals. Juanita Lomax and Chief Greg Porter, Person of the Year. Dylan Beam and Aubrey Marquis, Emerging Leader. Dr. Amanda Lechak, the Patty Award. Shannon Baron and Stephanie Sablot-Solomovich. Dr. Tom Baker, Community Leader. And Western PA Rising Star Megan Colley. Amber Deemer. Abby Kelly. Julia Kimmer. Jake Luzeu. Caitlin Meany. Elizabeth Mantikowski. Josiah McDonald. Xandra McDonald. Dominic Pinucci. Nathaniel Sefranic. Sefranco. Monica Snyder. And Elena Weber. And some reasonable facsimile of those names.
You did good, you did well.
Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Get Involved Incorporated for encouraging young adults to become more active and engaged in their communities and for organizing the annual Pittsburgh Service Summit. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 21, 2022 to be Get Involved Incorporated Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Need a motion?
No.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor who sent the fire by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. It is approved.
Thank you very much. Good to see you, thank you.
Here are also, I think there are multiple copies for the leaders.
Okay, great, here you go, everybody. I should say, your son is a former honoree, actually. Yeah, Ricky won a couple of years back, so. Thank you, everyone. It's good to see some friends here, and thanks to Reverend Burgess for filling in for Council Member Kell Smith. We love this event, and we had such a good time together on Thursday night. You know, obviously, there, you know, in our society, sometimes there's ways to feel down or feel like people aren't coming together. The Service Summit, in a really beautiful, special way every year, brings us all together from all backgrounds, and it was such a great celebration. Coro, where we've held it the last two years, is a great part of the City of Pittsburgh, certainly, and is a big part of the reason why, you know, after I came back for grad school, it was a no-brainer to stay in our region because of Pump and Pittsburgh Sports League and Coro and Deb Gross's friendship, things like that, to come back and be here in Pittsburgh. So I'm really proud of this group. If it's okay, Reverend, I was just gonna have them all say their name and their favorite thing to be involved with. I will say, maybe we'll start with the Person of the Year, Juanita Lomax, who, that's a big deal, Person of the Year, right? Yeah. Highmark, and she's on 17 boards.
So Juanita Lomax, I am with Highmark. My favorite thing that I like to do, as he said, I'm on four boards, so I love, love, love the organizations that I am working with. Dress for Success, When She Thrives, PWN, Professional Women's Network, as well as Byron Pittsburgh is another organization. I love, love to be able to work with the women in the city to make sure that they're finding employment to tend to their families, as well as care for their children, and provide any wraparound services that they need. So that's pretty much what I love to spend a lot of my spare time doing.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good fit for Person of the Year, and then we'll have all the other honorees. Amber, if you want to share?
Hi, everyone, Amber Deemer, and I'm with Clearview Federal Credit Union. I'm really honored to receive this reward. I say this award is a "we" award, this is just about me, this is about the team and my family who really support what I do. So I'm really proud of working with the Mentoring Partnership of Southwestern Pennsylvania because we know that relationships matter. Relationships matter in our schools and our communities, and so if I can be a catalyst for those relationships, I'm glad to be able to do so. So thanks so much for welcoming us here today.
Thanks, Amber. Megan?
Hi, I'm Megan Colley. I work at the Vincent and Child Discovery Center out in McCandless. I am a volunteer for the Walk to End Alzheimer's, for the Alzheimer's Association, for the PA Chapter. I do this walk in memory of my grandmother, who lost her battle to this terrible disease April of 2007. And so since 2016, I have been team captain, and I've worked hard along with my family and the support I had with my family, along with my wonderful parents, and I couldn't have done it without them. So I continue to live on my grandma's memory as well, so.
Okay, so quick joke about Aubrey Marquis before she goes. Seven years ago at this event, the award that Aubrey won was won by a young staff member for Rich Fitzgerald named Austin Davis. And so I told Aubrey that in about seven or eight years from now, she needs to be Lieutenant Governor-elect as well. It's a lot of pressure to put onto the Emerging Leader Award.
Ton of pressure, ton of great pressure. What are we without pressure? So as Tom said, my name is Aubrey Marquis. I am a Donor Services Officer for the Pittsburgh Foundation. That is my full-time work, but my passions lay in youth mentorship and young adult mentorship. I have been mentoring a young boy through Big Brothers Big Sisters for a couple of years now. I was the program director there prior to my position at the Pittsburgh Foundation. I'm also an adjunct professor at St. Vincent College, so I just spend my days really involved with the youth and young adults that are going to become our future leaders. And so receiving this award just, I think, suits my passions and what I drive other young adults to do and be. So thank you so much for having us.
If you didn't like the Boys and Girls Club before this, you're about to love it.
Good morning, thank you for having us. My name's Don Pinucci. I'm with Boys and Girls Club of Western Pennsylvania. Been with Boys and Girls Club my whole life since I was six years old, it's in my DNA. So I'm honored to represent them here today, and thanks to Tom for giving us a great shout-out. But no, thank you guys for having us, and, you know, Boys and Girls Club, we're all about giving a safe place for kids to go after school, during summer camps. So yeah, no, thank you so much, and thanks for having us.
Hi, good morning, thank you for having us here. My name's Dr. Amanda Lechak, and I'm the Regional Vice President for Commonwealth Charter Academy, CCA. It's Pennsylvania's largest K-12 public cyber charter school and the second-largest K-12 school district in the Commonwealth. My personal passions lie in just helping anybody who falls under the diversity bucket. A big part of my career was working with refugee and immigrant families, children and adults here in the City of Pittsburgh and abroad, so I have a deep passion for that. I currently sit on the Board of Life's Work of Western Pennsylvania, which is a great organization for those with disabilities, to show people what they are able to do and get them employed and, you know, work with local corporations to help them stay employed. And also, I'm on the Board of Pittsburgh Job Corps. Thank you so much for having us here today.
Thank you all. You can see why all the honorees got their awards. And before we get the group photo going, I just want to say thanks, you know, as a little guy that grew up in Greenfield and, oh, Nathaniel didn't get to go, oh, Nathaniel, okay. All right, I'll tell you the sentimental part in a second. Nothing else, Sefranco. I'm sorry.
Good morning, everyone, my name's Nathaniel Sefranco. I'm a Development Manager with the Alzheimer's Association, where our vision is a world without Alzheimer's and all other dementia. And my passion lies in helping people in any way that we can, not just through the work that I do, but by working with amazing volunteers, such as Megan and all the other volunteers here today as well, to be able to deliver on our mission. So if it wasn't for them and the work that we are able to do because of them, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you.
And I think we got everybody, so we're good. I just want to say, you know, as a little guy that grew up in Greenfield and went to Minideau and Resenstein and Alderweireld, I don't take for granted Councilman Burgess, Reverend Burgess and colleagues, these kind of moments in life, because, you know, back in the day, this seemed like, you know, something that would be a dream come true, and you're still making my dreams come true by honoring these wonderful people. So thanks to Council, and we really appreciate you. And our final thought is, and this is true, I know it's true for all of you on Council, don't be bored in Pittsburgh, be on a board in Pittsburgh, right? You down with that, Councilman Coghill? All right, okay, thank you all.
So let me watch you take one of them and open it up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good to meet you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Good to meet you, my sister. Good to meet you. My brother, good to meet you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, there are none, I think, to be read into the record. The next order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind everyone, the rules of Council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before Council. Profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? Did I miss something? Oh, the registered speaker, I'm sorry, the first, thank you, I'm sorry, I have to go to the registered speakers. Thank you for correcting me, I don't see it in my packet. But the first order, registered speaker, we'll go in order, is Jeff Davidic? Jeff Davidic, are you online or in the chambers? Jeff Davidic. Seen none? Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Dr. Miller is in chambers.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bels Hoover and the Hill Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024, 412-969-7997. I'm not a Democrat or Republican member of either party. If the U.S. Supreme Court voids Grutter versus Ballinger, 2003, I will approve. And you? A concern of Pittsburgh City Council and Mr. Ganey is to use equity and diversity to deal with a budget and create policy. The ED Diad, which is dominated, which dominates the Democratic Party ideology, is decisively informed by intersectionalist theory, advanced by Black African-American women PhDs, Doctors Kiara Bridges and Kimberly Crenshaw. So that means that this Council and Mr. Ganey are equitarians, in my view, but I am an equalitarian. By equality, I mean availability of the same resources to all individuals and institutions. Equity, dissimilar resource availability, compensating for perceived injustice. Assuming the facticity of systemic U.S.-American racism, particularly anti-Black bias, and sexism, anti-female woman bias, U.S.-American women of Black African descent to arrive at greater equity must be supported by governmental scriptive preference regarding business and academic work, which informs pro-affirmative institutional action policies. These are intersectionalists, I am anti-intersectionalist. An example of this is Katanji Brown Jackson being sent to the Supreme Court because Biden publicly stated that he wanted a generic Black woman. An alternative is U.S.-American Black women, accepting equality as a human-first principle, support themselves via non-government personal achievement performance in business and academia, which insists on the value of pro-affirmative individual activity practices. Those are intersectionists, I am pro-intersectionist. An example is Dr. Condoleezza Rice and, in fact, Dr. Kiara Bridges, whom I believe exemplifies brilliant self-sufficiency. In my view, a Black woman applicant for city budget resources will be given scriptive preference over a white man, even if his performance achievement is superior to hers. I view this as a form of negative intersectionalist racism and sexism.
My cousin, Patricia Campbell Smith, is on the federal's claim court. She was its presiding judge, and she did not get there because she was a Black female, she got there because she was qualified. To say that Katanji, I won't stand here and listen to that, to say that Supreme Court Justice Jackson is not qualified because of the color of her skin is not true, and her career and her education is exemplary. Next speaker is Elena Zaitsov.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Excuse me. I'm Elena Zaitsov, I live in South Oakland. Today I'm addressing you regarding the zoning portion of the Oakland Plan, which will be before you for a vote. Since the Oakland Plan was sent to you a few months ago, you've had the opportunity to have many meetings with city planning, so they can explain all the new zoning categories. However, from the UCMU hearings and the postcard fiasco for the first Oakland Plan hearing, we know that city planning doesn't always tell the whole story and can be misleading. And there's a lot to be considered, and there's a lot at stake. I think overwhelmed was a word used by one council member. If you were overwhelmed, imagine how residents feel with the alphabet soup of letters, UCMU, RMU, UCE, and IZ. Much like what happens with any new zoning, this bill needs to be divided, so each new zoning category and inclusionary zoning is its own bill. That way, hearings, meetings, and discussions can be focused and understanding can start to occur. People can actually make full comments rather than rush through their thoughts on four zoning categories in the allotted three minutes, which doesn't even allow a minute per. Three minutes to speak on four new zoning categories implies you really don't want to hear our details. If you really want to know what your constituents, the people most affected by this, think about it, hold a town hall meeting on each, as was done for the original Walnut Capital UCMU bill. I understand there have been some changes to the original bill. They need to be made public today, now, so residents aren't walking into a hearing not knowing what's in the bill, as frequently occurs to us. Residents should have had that information the day you had it. The city planning page for the Oakland Plan has not been updated since March of 2022. A lot has happened since then. Since I have some time left, I would like to make the request that when the agenda is changed at the start of your meeting, as was done today, it's announced what the amendment is. You may have the details, but we don't. It's a matter of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Marcia Bandis. Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Okay, so I'm Marcia Bandis from Squirrel Hill and the Chairwoman for the Pittsburgh for CDOC Coalition. I'm here to request a full-time executive director for the Gender Equity Commission, the GEC. In 2017, when the GEC was established, Anupama Jain was hired part-time to lead the commission. She documented her work as required, and over the course of a couple of years, she went from half-time to full-time. The city doesn't do that lightly, she earned it. Anud did not just attend GEC meetings and act as a conduit between the commission and the mayor's office. She was an ambassador, reaching out to community organizations, responding to requests to speak, attending local events, and making our existence known and understood. She kept the GEC website fresh, published a monthly newsletter, even did a TED Talk. She answered calls, justified and advocated for budget needed to keep the work moving, followed up on actions coming out of the commission. The Gender Equity Commission was becoming extremely successful. Each public meeting had guests attending, it was normal to have to bring in extra chairs. During the public comment time, guests would highlight what they were working on, ask for support or guidance, or some would just come to observe. We were becoming a known, we were becoming known and respected. The mayor wants to replace the position of a full-time executive director with one person who has responsibility for the success of the Gender Equity Commission, the LGBTQIA Commission, and the Black Women's Initiative. She carries the title Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accessibility Manager. After a year and a half without a dedicated executive director and just enough budget to coast on existing program, we have lost half of the commissioners. They weren't retired people looking for a way to fill their day and make a difference, they work full-time and were there to contribute and offer their experience in equity issues. When the city didn't take advantage of that expertise, they went elsewhere. The gender analysis as published was only the quantitative data, it was meant to be the baseline that programs would be measured against. Next steps were to reach out to Black communities and communities unrepresented in the gender analysis to validate, prioritize, and seek input on what they believed would make the most difference. I understand that the Black Women's Initiative is providing this critical link to Black communities. Why haven't seven, eight, nine of these women been nominated to the Gender Equity Commission? Why are we siloed? Mayor Ganey has said that he plans to direct city departments to consider gender equity and to implement programs accordingly. That approach has not ended systemic racism in our city, and it won't end systemic discrimination against women. It takes a dedicated effort to identify and address implicit biases in budgets and programs. The mayor has programs he wants to roll out. A full-time executive director with a thriving Gender Equity Commission can help him be successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everyone, my name is William Parker. I just want you all to just take a look at this, if you can see. This is one of the victims, right here, who was shot eight times outside the funeral service three weeks ago. Eight times. Here he is on his hospital bed, clinging to life. This could have been prevented, and like you heard me call down here two weeks ago, asking, who received a Stop the Violence Grants? This is a million dollars, million dollars of our tax dollars. We have a right and we deserve to know who received a Stop the Violence Grants. We need to know who we can call besides the police when we have concerns for safety. We just can't depend on the police all the time. Some of us feel more safer talking to community outreach people. And from my understanding, there are community people out here who are doing outreach work. Forty of them who received a Stop the Violence Grant. Why can't we know who these organizations are? I think that's a fair question. Do we have to keep yelling? Do I have to keep showing up at these events protesting just to get a simple question We need to know, like, this was two weeks ago, I was on this, and we still don't have an answer. I've already put in a write the no, I had to put in a write the no request, which they've replied back and said I won't get the answer to that until another 30 days from now. How many more victims between now and then, until I found, hopefully, find out the list of who received these grants, so we can connect with these people and our communities? What's the purpose of having them? What was the purpose of funding this initiative if you're not going to tell us who these people are that we could reach out to? There are city council members, all of you have a responsibility to go after and find out and produce this information for the public. It's all of your responsibility, it's not just one, it's all of yours. At the end of the day, everybody should be advocating, let the people know who are these 40 groups who received this funding. You can't get on here and keep saying, my thoughts and my prayers, this is shame, and you really believe that this mayor's plan for, and his plan for peace, if you don't advocate and ask the questions of who received this funding, so we as a community know.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, the next order of business would be presentation of papers, starting with myself, Councilman Coghill, for me, Chair of Urban Recreation. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Burgess presents Bill Number 984, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of DHS OEKE's Service Corps in an Amount Not to Exceed $12,000 for the Payment of 2021 AmeriCorps Key Summer Program, which provides funding for hosting nine youth to participate in the Department of Parks and Recreation Educational Programming Jobs Training for the Summer. The AmeriCorps members who participated in this program worked alongside city park staff to support the multi-site summer camps in providing for the payment thereof.
Thank you very much, Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works. Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 985, Resolution Amending Resolution 250 of 2021, which authorizes the mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with Quedaqa for professional services relating to fleet telematics and snow route optimization by expanding the scope to include GPS AVL installation and maintenance for environmental service and by increasing the term and authorize not to exceed amount by $492,660 for costs not to exceed $2,626,208. Bill Number 986, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 840 of 2019, effective December 23, 2019, as amended in title. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Liberty Avenue HSIP by $275,000. Bill Number 987, Resolution Further Amending- Resolution further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by increasing Liberty Avenue by $92,993.21. Bill Number 988. Resolution taking, appropriating, and condemning by the City of Pittsburgh for public roadway purposes certain property in the Fifth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh owned by Brian and Donna Albert, located along Andover Terrace, and authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto, and further authorizing, in lieu of eminent domain, the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary and permanent easements on this property and other separate properties necessary for completion of temporary support work for land stabilization around Andover Terrace. Bill Number 989. Resolution providing for an agreement with CSXT for engineering work on the Frasier Street Swinburne Bridge Replacement Project and providing for the payment of the cost not to exceed $20,020. Bill Number 990. Resolution providing for an agreement with CXT for engineering work on the Charles Anderson Bridge Replacement Project and providing for the payment cost not to exceed $15,180. Bill Number 991. Resolution providing for reimbursement in maintenance agreement or agreements with Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for local costs to upgrade pedestrian facilities at SR19A84 as part of a larger project undertaken by PennDOT to improve SR19A84 by roadway altercations or resurfacing at a cost not to, at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh municipality not to exceed $27,600. Bill Number 992. Resolution amending Resolution 924 of 2021, entitled. Resolution providing for an reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the Pittsburgh Pedestrian Wayfinding Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,400,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost of zero dollars. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements to increase the not-to-exceed amount to $1,500,000, an increase of $100,000, and authorize entering into a reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. Bill Number 993. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with multiple phases of the Liberty Avenue Highway Safety Improvement Program, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $7,405,556, an increase of $800,000 for the final design phase from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost to the city of $4,500, an increase of $2,500 from the previously executed agreement. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you.
Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 994. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 519 East General Robinson, Pittsburgh, 15212.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 995. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with United States Department of Justice for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $79,327 for funding technology projects. And Bill Number 996. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with St. Moritz Security Services, Inc., for security guard services. Compensation under the agreement shall be in an amount not to exceed $6,990,061, with annual not-to-exceed amounts as set forth below for each respective budget year, subject to the availability of funds and annual council appropriations at rates in compliance with and subject to any applicable requirements, including but not limited to collective bargaining commitments in the City of Pittsburgh Service Worker Prevailing Wage Ordinance.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And then Council, go ahead. And then Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 997. Resolution amending Resolution 644 of 2020, authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to adopt an existing government contract and enter into any related agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Carisoft Technology Corp. to provide Google Cloud subscription services and add Google Assured Workloads to provide secure storage for sensitive data on the city's cloud platform at an amount not to exceed $4,282,824.38. And Bill Number 998. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement or agreements with Avanti to provide Sherwell ITSM Information Technology Service Management System to license, implement, manage, operate, and deliver IT services to meet the needs of the City of Pittsburgh at a sum not to exceed $709,177.
Uh, Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 999. Resolution further amending Resolution 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended, entitled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program, so as to identify specific public service grant projects in City Council District 1 and District 7, and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 1000. Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the implementation, administration of the Housing Counseling Program and related costs in the amount not to exceed $100,000. Bill Number 1001. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with WSP USA, Inc., for services related to an update to the Manchester National Registered District that will add additional historic context, including civil rights history, to buildings within a district at a cost not to exceed $35,000. And Bill 1002. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of Permits, Licensing, and Inspections to enter into an amended agreement or agreement with Dapalonia for emergency geotechnical services to assist in response to land movement and landslide incidents. The agreements will add another year to the existing agreement term and shall be at an overall cost not to exceed $1,500,000.
Thank you very much. We now have a presentation on behalf of Councilwoman Kell Smith, who is Chair of Hearings.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1003. Resolution amending Resolution Number 630 of 2022, appointing Karen Garrett to serve as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for an updated term to expire April 30 of 2023. And Bill Number 1004. Resolution informing City Council of the appointment of Bobby Wilson to the Reinvestment Review Committee. Councilman Wilson will serve on the seats designated for members of City Council appointed by the President of Council for a term to expire June 28, 2026.
Need a motion to re receive and file.
Uh, sir, mode.
All those in favor, send a file by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. We will now move, it is passed. We will now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action, starting with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 978. Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for November 15, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 915. Resolution amending Resolution Number 648 of 2019, which authorize the mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement or agreements with Mar Dussel to provide auditing services to the City of Pittsburgh by exercising the additional option years to extend the term of the agreement for two years. Total cost not to exceed $672,859 over five years.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received, the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That brings us to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 979. Reported a Committee on Public Safety Services for November 15, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 912. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the United States Department of Justice for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $539,580.21 for the purpose of providing funding for training and capacity expansion for the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and Department of Public Safety for crisis response. Bill Number 913. Resolution amending Resolution Number 621 of 2017, authorizing the mayor, Director of Public Safety, and Director of Finance to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended lease agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Trust for Cultural Resources for providing a police substation at the Lantern Building in downtown Pittsburgh. Providing, I'm sorry, beginning September 2017, the amended lease agreement or agreements shall provide for an eighteen-month expansion at identical terms not to exceed $15,000 annually. Bill Number 914. Resolution amending Resolution Number 725 of 2021, authorizing the mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a fifth amended professional services agreement or agreements with Johnson Controls for Continued Security Camera Integration and Support Services at an additional cost of $381,700, and extending such agreements for an additional six months and increasing the overall agreement compensation to $6,570,0257.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Councilman, the, the bill having received, the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That now brings us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
You, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 980. Reported a Committee on Public Works for November 15, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 907. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V, Traffic, Article 7, Parking, Chapter 541, General Parking Regulations, by revising Section 541.04B, entitled Smart Loading Zones, to extend, to extend the Smart Loading Zone Pilot Program from one year to three years. Bill Number 908. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Swindell Bridge construction project and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,700,000, an increase of $900,000 from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at ninety-five percent in the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $1,500, a zero-dollar increase from the previously executed agreement. Bill Number 909. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a supplemental agreement or agreements with CDR McGuire, Inc., for project design, management services, and reviews in connection with various City of Pittsburgh projects to add funding for the construction and preliminary engineering phases, increasing the total not to exceed amount to $3,157,268.61 from an agreement, an increase of $1,206,117.85.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the vote of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Uh, Madam Clerk, calling, staying on Bill 2022-0907. I don't believe I technically need to, but just to be overly cautious, an aye on all other bills.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Aye.
Seven ayes on Bill 908 and 909, and six ayes and one abstention on Bill 907.
The bill having received, the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 981. Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for November 15, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 747. Resolution approving a new institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article II, Chapter 905, Section 905.03.D. and Article VII, Chapter 922, Section 922.12.G. for Carnegie Mellon University, entitled Carnegie Mellon, Carnegie Mellon University Institutional Master Plan 2022, dated September 2022, on property zone EMI, Educational Medical Institution District, Fourth, Seventh, and Fourteenth Wards, Council Districts Number Eight and Five. Bill Number 754. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article I, Section 902.03, zoning map, by changing from RMH Multi-Unit Residential High Density and R1DL Residential Single-Unit Detached Residential Low Density to EMI, Education Medical Institution, seven parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, Seventh and Fourteenth Wards. And Bill Number 920. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant for project scoping of Sawmill Run Boulevard in the amount of $300,000, with a local match of $100,000, for a total project cost of $400,000, and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received, the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Erica Strasburger.
Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 982. Reported a Committee on Performance and Asset Management for November 15, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 919. Resolution amending Resolution 942 of 2021, providing for an agreement or agreements in a lease or leases by and between the City of Pittsburgh and first vehicle services pursuant to which first vehicle will furnish all work and services needed to manage and maintain the city's vehicle fleet by increasing to 2022 not to exceed amount by $600,000.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received, the legally required number of votes is passed finally. It takes us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management, or is it, did I, I just read that one? Okay. There's a, I'm sorry, I couldn't turn the page fast enough, right? And it's the same sponsor. Councilwoman Deborah, no, it's not. Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Did I turn the page? Sorry, Councilwoman Gross. The double, the double committees get me every time.
Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 983. Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for November 15, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 886. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Kittleson LLC in the total amount of $22,360.45 for two matters filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. And Bill Number 911. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the URA for administrative services for Commonwealth Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program awards for a sum not to exceed $250,000 or five, over five years, and for the payment of the cost thereof.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received, the legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Members of council, is there anything, any comments you want to bring before us? If not, I do have some meeting announcements. Immediately following this meeting, council will meet via Zoom for an executive session on Bills 916, 917, and 918 as it relates to warrants. Council will hold the standing committees' meeting this afternoon at 1:30 p.m. Speaker registration will close at 12:30 p.m. today. Council budget meetings will continue tomorrow, Tuesday, November 22, at 10 a.m., with Housing, Parking, and Sports and Exhibition and Stadium Authorities chaired by Councilwoman Gross, and PWSA in Alka San at 1:30, also chaired by Councilwoman Gross. All budget meetings will be streamed live via City Channel Pittsburgh on YouTube. On Wednesday, November 23, at 10 a.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing relative to tax, budget, and citizen participation on the mayor's proposed 2023 operating and capital budget. Speaker registration will close at 8:30 a.m. Wednesday morning. Also, on Wednesday, November 23, council will hold a cablecast public hearing at 2 p.m. on Bill 2022-0819 as it relates to amending the zoning code to update the review and approval process for downtown districts. Speaker registration closes at 12:30 p.m. Wednesday afternoon. To register to speak at the council meetings and public hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, council and clerk's offices will be closed Thursday, November 25, and Friday, November, Thursday, November 24, and Friday, November 25, for the Thanksgiving holiday. I do want to wish everyone, all of our members, the staff, the city, and our viewers, a happy Thanksgiving. We know that Thanksgiving historically was a time to be thankful for all the things that you have received, and that's even more apropos today. Some of you are aware of the fact that Harvard University has thus done a couple of years now a study that links happiness to gratitude, that they say the number-one criteria to be happy is to be grateful. And so, as I've said to our congregation on yesterday, I have learned to eat my three chicken wings and my potato chips and be very grateful. God has been so good to me, and I'm grateful for all he's done. And so, I wish all of you, all of you a blessed Thanksgiving, and I think it's important that all of us learn to be even more grateful. All right, I need a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
Same old.
Second, is there a second? All those in favor, send a five by saying aye. Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.[1741.74][1741.74][music][1742.74][1742.74][music]